Because they're. Coming.
Goldmine area or something because of the fact that.
Are these all good to be open?
Okay, yeah. Okay, we are starting the meeting. Um, today is Thursday, June twentieth. Welcome, everybody. We're. Reviewing the agenda. Good to be. Yeah, all of a sudden.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, my minutes for May ninth, I didn't have an issue with them.
I I found some spelling errors, but that was it.
They were there on purpose to see if you were paying attention.
I don't, I can't spell, so. As long as this sounds right, I'm good.
On the top of page two, and then board was also misspelled, the first line of committee reports to select board. Other than that, I thought they looked good.
Board is B O R D S, isn't it?
A. No.
Uh, okay, so.
But yeah, other than that, I would move where you approve them.
Okay, I make, okay. All favor.
Hi.
Okay. Uh, uh, citizens input.
Um, so that was the ninth?
Yes, yeah, the May ninth. Oh, the thirtieth means, yep, okay.
So your motion was to include him both.
Yes, sorry.
Uh, do we have citizens input? Anybody on the? No, okay. Um, opening paving beds. We got four.
No, two, three, sorry. One of them is just insurance.
Liberty.
So you take one and I'll take one and okay, I'll get to open them.
He said he didn't think he would have any service where he was gonna go.
His home.
He doesn't have any service.
Oh, he might be camping.
You gotta pay them. I just looked at the truck like it was there.
Okay, um.
So that's what.
I have. I have Pike Industries. And they are. Um. They are for. Um, paving, they're one hundred and twenty eight thousand, two hundred and fifty. Show shouldering their nine thousand. And their total was one hundred and thirty seven thousand, two hundred and fifty.
Well, what's their per ton rate?
Uh. Times estimate one thousand, three hundred and fifty.
No, no, the unit price.
One before left.
Oh, twenty-two. By fifty-five, what the heck?
Ninety-five dollars.
Oh, yeah, sorry, ninety-five dollars a ton. Okay, I didn't see that.
Okay.
Yeah, I wasn't fine on it either.
Oh. Well, okay, nice. All right, if that mean.
Yep.
I have Will. And their pavement bid was one hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred. And the shouldering was five thousand, so the total was one hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred. And the, it was ninety unit price.
Yeah, the dollars.
Yeah. Just wait, see if she's ready.
Good.
So I have Fuller Band and Gravel. The total for the co- um, the pavement is one hundred, five thousand, fifty-seven dollars. The total for the shouldering is one thousand dollars. The total is one hundred, six thousand and fifty-seven dollars. And the unit price is seventy-seven dollars and eighty-two cents per time.
Wow.
Winner.
So just so you know, we have one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. I think that's what it said in the bids there.
Yeah, no, and so we'll go farther on.
We wanna, we wanna spend that whole one hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I, you holler at me every year about that.
I know, every time you save us money and I have, so I have to say it again.
Well, the only, the only problem that happens is. When we're shimmying, we try to pick the spot where it seems like we're gonna end, and we have to start this like a half mile out from the thing. And I'm always afraid we're gonna go over and you're gonna say, Tom, you just went thirty thousand dollars over our budget. So we always try to stay. Just under and sometimes ten thousand is where we landed, I think, the last five years.
So take at seventy-seven dollars, seven a ton, go a little farther.
No, and and we try, we try to, I don't like leaving any, any road unpaved, let's say, and and, you know, we'll. We'll try to make sure we get to the spot where it's spent right to the T button. If I can do that, I'm also gonna pick lottery numbers or something.
Well, you're pretty good at making it just short, so you know, you're doing good.
Okay, so. Um, we need to make a motion to accept Fuller's bid.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to accept Fuller's paving and shouldering bid.
I will second that.
All favor.
Hi.
Okay.
There's another discussion or? That's gonna be closer. Really lock their socks up.
Yeah, I don't know, must be they didn't wanna bid up there this year, I don't know.
It was sad. Last year, I think you were actually a little bit hiring board, Eric talked the board into going with you because. They didn't like that.
Cause I'm like one of those pennies that don't go away or something, is that the same?
A bad penny that keeps turning up, well, as long as you keep doing a good job on the road, then I don't know how bad that penny is.
Thank you, girl.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we are. That was a really big difference.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not complaining, but that was. Um.
Yeah, usually it's. Closer, well, usually one of them is a little off, but.
All right, so Eric is not present. So quotes for security system are unless you have those.
No, he was supposed to do some more investigation on what the folks involved is for. Monthly maintenance fees and.
Yep, yeah.
Stuff and I don't think he's done too well.
Okay, uh, tap grant, D N K contract amendment.
Okay, so I did some homework.
Yes.
And. I'm not gonna say that this is apples to apples because I don't entirely understand the grant part, but comparing it to. The current two-year bid history. The state of Vermont has that was updated in June. Um. And this is going back to the bid that they gave us on January fifth of two thousand and fourteen, it's gone up significantly, which I know is a larger structure. But my concern is just how much. The price per unit for items has gone up. And then the other part of the homework I did is we currently have a project that has not been issued completion acceptance. Um, they did the majority of the work this year. The contractor bid for the project was. Nine thousand or nine hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred seventeen dollars. The engineer's estimate was by a hundred twenty-seven thousand, three hundred ninety-six dollars. And the engineering costs, again, I'm not sure if this is apples to apples for the inspection, but we spent so far sixty-one thousand dollars and. We're not quite done, that was as of June tenth, so I don't think all the bills have been updated in the system yet.
Um, would this?
And that's on this.
Yep.
This nine hundred.
Yep.
Two thousand.
We need to show that to anybody with the allergies that they can peek at. How's with that? Can see it, Sherry?
Can.
Can.
Okay, um. I know this is based off this size building. I'm very concerned with. Even though it's based on the size building. I, I don't believe. We're going to hit that number that we needed to be at.
That's my concern, just with how prices keep rising, I, I.
And it's not gonna go the other way.
Yeah. Not unless some miracle happens, but.
Um. And the other thing too is, I'd like to. I'd like to get to the point where we can go out to bid, but. In doing that. And spending all that money. Are we? Setting ourselves back, I mean, how much would it cost us to? Get to that point on our own if we didn't utilize D N K to get to. Through the permit process to the point of going out to bid. Yeah, we, we're gonna be eighty, ninety grand at that point. How much would it cost us to do it? I, I just.
And it goes back to the stormwater permit question too, is if we. If we say no to this right now and pick it back up again in a year or two. Is the stormwater permit, do we still have to follow that or does that go away or, cause I don't know that they really answered that question.
We don't have a stormwater permit for.
Okay.
For that project.
And that was the, that was a big.
Separate, okay. So, yeah.
It was a big expense.
I ended up having a, uh. Not a planned conversation with Stephanie, I just wanna make sure she knew about, the meeting wasn't canceled for last week and um. So she was saying that, um, cause I was asking. What about the permits and things like that, and she said if we did this next level, then. Then we would have like a meeting with the engineers and the boy and king and everything else and, and look at it and take a, a look at it, but um, it's. I don't know, for me, it's. There's so many unknowns.
If there is.
Like, I feel like we know more if we do it ourselves, you know, and we have control more.
And I mean, I, I, I don't know about, cause this was something a few people said to me was. Can Eric just put some more salt in the sand so it doesn't freeze as much, I mean.
Can, he can, he absolutely can.
I mean, I know some of it is that stockpiling and having it for storms, but.
Right, and we've been.
Even if we build this and there's a salt shortage, we're still like the upper creek without a paddle, so.
Right.
I don't know, stuff comes into sh- shover. Yeah, a lot of it comes in through the trains, which is what I was told.
Um. I, again, like I said the last time, I am just leery of getting to a point where. We spend a huge chunk of our money and still don't have. Still not be able to do what we want to do. And maybe not, potentially not be where we'd like to be.
I mean, about the best I could see if we kept moving forward slowly. Is we'd have a set of plans, but that's not to say in five years that those plans would be null and void, so then we've spent that much money for. A pretty picture.
I'm into art, but not that long.
I like different, I mean, I like, well, some of it comes down to, do we need it or do we want it? If we needed it, if we really need it, then. Going the process through the grant and all this stuff, it'll, it's gonna cost us one hundred and sixty-five thousand. Whereas if we back out now, we still got. Permitting and engineering and construction costs, so you know, is it gonna cost us four hundred thousand?
That's what I mean, yeah, that's what I.
It costs us four hundred thousand dollars.
That's why I said if.
We could do it for a hundred and sixty-five, or we can do it for more, or we just don't do it, I mean, do we really need it?
I mean, and all.
The sand, it'd be nice to store more salt, but.
In all honesty, I gra- I get what Hall said the other night about having it. But. How many years have we not had it?
Two hundred and fifty years.
I mean, if we.
Well, the town's only been in its own.
Uh.
Since the way brothers got out.
Um.
Seventy.
So. I mean, I don't wanna. Just miss the whole idea completely, I mean, down the road maybe, but. I'm just worried about spending all the money that we have and, and, and not. Be anywhere, but there again, too. If we do on our own, how much are we gonna spend?
Mm-hmm.
In the permit process and all that stuff.
So.
Yeah.
Um. If you go through this route, which I, I, as a taxpayer, I, I, you know my, my stance on that.
Yeah.
Um. If you, if the town doesn't have to, and, and right now, you know, right now is not the, personally, right now is not a, a great time to be. Taking out money, trying to stretch our necks out, and just the way that the, the economy is going, the political upheaval. Being what it is, I, I mean, just ratchet back and just wait, I mean, the, the ability for the town to do something because. You know, you can look outside of the box a, a tiny little bit, you know, you, it doesn't have to be, you know. It doesn't necessarily, you know, you don't, you could make a salt or sand shed somewhere, but does it have to be down there? And, and this is, this is, this is part of a bigger conversation after you make this decision is, you know, you don't necessarily have to do. You know, just because that is where that has always been.
So.
And that's.
That idea was presented to me. Of possibly approaching Larry. And seeing if we could use those bunkers.
Hmm, yeah, but that is the land trust's land, so it, um. I don't know, you have to go through the land trust to ask them about that, so.
Right, we have to talk with them, first we have to talk to Larry first and see if they wanna move driveway for them.
Right, I know, I know, there's a, there's a.
The land trust will have to some.
There would be something to it, but it might be worth approaching him.
I mean, we don't know if we don't ask.
Right.
Right.
And, and I honestly don't believe that it's going to cost the town a mere hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, I, there is, there is going to be fees, there's going to be costs, this is not a. You know, twenty years ago, thirty years ago, these buildings were cheap. And, and it was inexpensive, and there was not the, the bureaucratic hoops that are now in front of every town.
Right.
It was twenty, thirty years ago, the town could have paid for one of these things, put it up, and it wouldn't have been, it wouldn't have been a big deal, and it would have been grandfathered in.
Right.
But now it is the levels of bureaucracy being what they are, I mean, it's, it's, you're going to spend a lot of money for slightly drier sand.
Um, well, that's what I'm saying. Is going off these numbers. Even if we just scaled them down. I don't think we're gonna get to, I know we're not gonna get to where we wanna be.
This plan is still what? The finalized plan is still a year out, really, two years out, I.
Yeah, I mean, prices are gonna change.
Yeah. If it, if it's staying on the current trend.
Yeah.
Um.
And most of our paychecks aren't gonna go up that much to help us.
No.
So.
Um.
Right, but if you give up this opportunity, then. You know, you're gonna be spending more than a hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Right, but you're gonna have to spend that, you have to get away from the idea that you're only gonna spend a hundred and forty-seven thousand or a hundred, that's, because that's just an unknown that is unrealistic.
But, but if we're.
Sherry wants to say something.
Sherry wants to say something.
I just wanna remind this board, cause I don't think any of you were on the, um, around when we were building the garage. But delay is going to cost us, if we delay, it's gonna cost us, and I think we need to think. If we're gonna have to do this in the future, maybe now is the time to do it because it will be cheaper than doing it in the future. But delay is going to cost us, the garage cost us much more than it needed to, cause there was a whole year where we had to. Work on things, so I'm just offering that out, and while Michael may be representing himself as a taxpayer, there are other people out here that. Care about the environment and care about doing the right thing for the future. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, this, I don't know, I mean, I know that when I was, um, did that research for the last meeting, and yeah, there were some towns that did give it up. But I mean, from what I tried to put together for cost and actually building something, I figured it was around three hundred and fifty thousand, so can we fundraise, can we do something creative? You know, can we get like? The walls, the base and the walls up and then.
What about, so if, so. The idea is on the table asking Larry, which I am all for asking.
Yeah.
What about, is there room and can we add on to what is there to make that bigger? I mean, he was put a few thousand into what we have right now, just to expand it some more temporarily, whatever, I don't know.
Just didn't think the structure was sound, but. But the structure, yeah, what, there is.
No, this, this.
Close to the property lines, you know.
The structure is sound, it's just you have to take the doors off and you have to build, if you go down and look at it, you have.
I never really looked at it.
So one side of it, it's telephone poles.
Yeah.
It's like fourteen telephone poles, the salt section has a concrete pad in it.
Yep.
And it's got pressure-treated two-by-sixes barricading.
Yeah.
Where the recycling is, is dirt ground and it's got sliding doors.
Yeah.
All the, those sliding doors need to go away and you need to, someone needs to go down and look at it, and it, you know, it is going to give you more sand or more salt. It's not going to give you, you know, the amount of salt that everyone thinks that they need, and to check, to Sherry's point. If the town got rid of salt altogether, I would be absolute, I would be the number, I, I am absolutely against. Looking at the amount of salt that goes on our, our roads on a, a yearly basis, it's, you know, there are, there are. The state of Montana does not use salt.
There are a lot of states that don't.
Lot of sta- lot of states that don't, and I continually see, you know, very bare roads with big piles of green salt. On the, on the pa- on the paved roads year in and year out, and to me, that is an absolute excess of salt, and that salt go, where does that salt go? It runs off into the, you know, i- is it any wonder why we have as many dead trees along the roadside, like, we're literally salting our own fields. But that's, it, that is a completely different digression.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, there used to be a spec, back when I was a soils tech, for sand to be put on roads instead of salt.
Yeah.
They got away from it, but there used to be a spec for that.
Right.
Um.
Partly with the sand, was it was harder to get cleaner sand that.
Yeah, but that's the problem, is it, it wouldn't really pass creation, if I recall correctly, it was supposed to, was it supposed to be anything larger than three eights inch? If I, that's quite a few years ago.
So, um. I don't know what to do, I, I just.
Well, if we go to the, the next stage, it's two thousand dollars.
Six thousand.
Out of our pocket, right?
Right, yeah. If we, of the eight thousand, two thousand, we can part of our one hundred and sixty-five.
Um, but then.
We still have to figure out, when we get to that point, and it's. The good documents say it's gonna cost, still costing them dollars, even though they're supposed to be targeting to find us something for six hundred and fifty thousand, depending on the size. Um. What's my turn of thoughts, sorry?
Well, I mean, it'd be worth, go ahead.
At, at what point do we pull out, and at what point will the state let us not have to reimburse them? They, it's pretty clear from Scott early, early, that it's on a case-by-case basis.
Right.
And, and stop right now, we're gonna have to pay them back twenty-five thousand.
Right.
So it's not just. What they reimburse us, but if you pull out early, they also get to charge for.
Penalize you for all of them.
Their time that they've spent trying to get it for.
The, another thing too, we gotta take into consideration is. We absolutely know this is not gonna land us where we wanna be. And we didn't get the paving grant. I don't foresee.
Actually.
I don't foresee, and I, and I obviously could be wrong, cause I have no idea. What if we decide to go ahead with this? We don't get to where we wanna be, if I, number-wise. And we can't go after that other grant.
I think they're separate.
It might be, but there's a chance we won't get it.
Two hundred thousand dollar one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And according to the, the. I can't remember the name of it, but the TAC, the, the regional planet, um.
Pats.
Yeah, the, they said at the one that I went to is, they try to do the grants kind of based on. A percentage, so you know, Rutland would have a higher percentage because they have more roads than Timoth does, but they do try to get that to. To kinda equal it out, it's just, you know, some towns would get it more, cause they are, see it more often, cause they have more roads to maintain, you know. That's the paving grant.
Yeah, that's the paving grant.
This other grant is a separate one, and what we've been said, well, the state's got three hundred thousand dollars invested in it, they're gonna wanna give you two hundred thousand more. If they don't, then you, you would have to go to voters and say, do you wanna pass a bond for this, and if the voters say no, then. You go to the state and say, hey, you don't wanna have to pay the money back, we did our best and this is, that's what. There's a lot of ifs and buts in.
Yeah, well.
Too many.
And my, yeah, my research of another, the other town that has like nine hundred people was that they got into it, I don't know how far. And they ended up giving fifty thousand dollars back, they just didn't wanna proceed, and the townspeople. I, I asked the town clerk, I said, so did you get like feedback from the taxpayers, and she goes, no, nobody's saying anything, like, okay. Yeah.
Right, I just.
So many people are here wanting to know about it, so.
Yeah.
You know, yeah.
But even that, I just don't want to get to a position where we have to do that, I, I don't. I just don't.
But I wanted to give up on the idea though either, so.
No.
Yeah.
I don't, but I don't want. I really, really don't want to go, the taxpayer wrote and this town up for more money.
Right, so you don't have to.
Right.
If you get, if we get to the, to their. Construction bid point, and you know, and it's eight hundred thousand dollars, you just say no, don't have to, you don't have to fund it.
And at that point, what's it costing us?
The thing is, is that they, they knew how much money the grant was, and they, they, they're, they know how much money the town has. You know, you can say we have three hundred, and that was the original, when Kathy originally went to this.
Three hundred thousand.
I asked her, and she said, well, if it do, if we can't build a building for three hundred thousand, then we won't do it. And, and that was, that is not how they are looking at this, they're looking at this as the grant is part of, you know, the, and. To be fair, they have to, you know, but when you, with the town says, we have three hundred thousand dollars to spend on a building, how big can you get that building? They didn't do that the first time, they're, they're not gonna, they didn't do it this time, and you know, they're gonna charge you another, you know, eight thousand dollars, did not do it a second time.
I mean, that's, that, that's my concern, is that's how everybody, all the players are making money, you know. Is, um, through the grants.
Right, yeah, no, they are too.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not, I'm not, bad nothing anybody, it's just that that's the system, and I mean. All through, like, the federal monies, like, marshals watch it through the fire service, you know, that a lot of.
It just gets absorbed.
It goes in weird places, you know, it's, so, yeah, I don't know, it's, it, that's my concern is, is the. Yeah, I feel like.
So if we go to the next step.
Yeah.
And what step is that? What, what is?
Well, they're, they're supposed to come back with. Everything ready to go out to bid, you know, what, how much it's. They think it's gonna cost, and all the documents are ready, the permits are in place, that's my understanding, is they would have everything ready.
But do we want to have the permit in place if we can't do this, or are we then?
No, they're not gonna have that ready, what they said, they, they, they said what they're gonna do, they're gonna, they're gonna try to get to a, you know, a building that is the, that meets the town's costs. And if they can't do that, they will do that three more times. You know, if they can't make, the town doesn't, I mean. The budget is what it, you know, like.
Right, right, but so, right now. We have to spend two grand, eight grand, but to get to this next step.
Well, it's eight grand plus the rest of their contract. You know, they had the original contract at fifty-three thousand and added eight thousand to it, so it would be.
Okay.
It would be that whole sixty thousand plus the thirty thousand or so that, or that, um. Regional planning gets for being the manager. Stephanie thought that that would cost us, to get to that point, it would cost us seventy-five thousand dollars. And we would have documents to go out to bid. For a particular size, a particular.
So if we, if we agree to. I'm not saying we are, if we agree to spend the eight grand and go to the next hurdle, the next hurdle is the. Is the permit process and going out to bid.
No.
Right, this eight thousand added to their other fifty thousand would get us to. Construction documents to go out to bid. But it's gonna cost between D N K and regional commissions, gonna cost us around seventy-five thousand. Of that, the, the state's gonna pay seventy-five percent.
If we stay, yeah, if we go to bed, yeah.
If we don't, then it's potentially seventy-five thousand.
Right, that we, yeah, we have nothing.
I mean. Not that I. Necessarily want to keep the can down the.
Necessarily want to keep the can down the road for another month, but could we do that and talk to, to Larry and to Chris and talk to. Yeah, land trust and.
Yeah, I mean, we're delaying it now, so we know it's not gonna, we're not gonna get this cycle, so you know, whatever. Whenever we get to it, we get to it, I guess.
And then maybe we all take a gander at the, the shed next time we're at the transfer station and. And it might be cheaper to build a, a separate shed to house the recycling.
I, I don't know, I just.
You, you don't need to have all of the recycle. I, I mean, there's, there's a, Hubbard does a wonderful job of recycling, though, I mean, Tinmouth goes out of its way to recycle this and that and, you know, like.
But it's a service for the town.
You don't have to, you don't, I, I'm not saying get rid of all recycling, but you don't have to recycle large TV, I mean, like, there are things that, that. That can, that can be, that there, there are other recycling facilities in the state that are fifteen minutes away. The town doesn't have to do all the, and just because it's offered as a recycling option, doesn't mean that every town has to do it. I mean, now Tabor has a, has a, a tiny little transfer station, you know, they do recycle, they do a certain amount of recycling and they do garbage and it's. Like, it's really nice, it's neat, it's tidy, it's, you know.
I would like to. Put this to next meeting. And, and I'm fine with going to see Larry and seeing what he says.
And then I don't know if he would reach out to the, the land trust or if somebody else wanted to do that, I don't.
Honestly, those bunkers would be. The bunkers would be perfect, and we could leave the loader over there in one of the bunkers.
Well, maybe a little bit further than what Eric might wanna run, but it's not that wicked far from.
Two minutes away.
You know? If it saves the town nine hundred thousand dollars over the course of thirty years, or whatever, it's worth looking into.
I, I, I like that idea, me making a motion? I don't know.
By consensus, I think you can agree.
Yes, and I will um, try and reach out to Larry this weekend. Right, I mean, yeah, yeah, but it was.
Or at least ask him if he's amenable to it, how much do you want for rent?
Right, a- absolutely, right, yeah, okay.
Things to be negotiated, but it's.
Yeah, it was. Yeah, i- i- yeah, it was brought to me by somebody that seems to think it would be feasible.
I mean, if we have to install a new driveway or beef it up.
Right, go out back.
We'd have to put asphalt in there with the salt, right, and then we.
We said the current, the current salt's on concrete, right?
It could, it might be on uh, asphalt, I'm not sure, I haven't looked at it.
It's gotta be on asphalt and we'd have to paint the, the walls because it'll eat the walls away.
Bucket of silane, actually, I shouldn't say that, I don't know how much silane we used to have.
I guess, yeah, we'd have to, before you, go look at them too, look at the corners and see what shape they're in.
Oh, there is that.
Might wanna do that.
You wanna check on that? This, the silane?
But, yeah, this is, but yeah, I can check and see what it costs at the store.
We're ready to go? Uh, okay, so the next thing is, uh, the tree safety grant, did we make a decision on?
That's why you have the. I modified the grant a little bit, so. October first to December thirty first, because David Woodstock did talk with. Women of the state and they figured that we could start October first. It is that, just that section. I must be missing something, because I still don't understand how they can bid without the trees being. I think we're asking them how much a day.
And I thought in the last meeting, we said the trees would be marked by September. We're asking them to bid now. It just seems strange to me, I don't know.
I think they're a camp.
But I mean, if, if they're looking for. Ash trees. Then they could probably get a good idea how many they can do along that stretch for thirty five thousand dollars.
Might not be a bad trial run.
And, and worst case, if we do it now and we have to do it again, that would give us time to, to put it back out to bid if we don't get anything this time and maybe then the trees would be marked.
Or if they all come back and say, hey, I can't bid on this until you mark the trees.
Yes, I'd like to just, um.
Move forward with it? Oh, do we need to mo- make a motion on that?
Motion that we move forward with a tree bid.
All in favor, I second it, all in favor. Alright, so.
Stayed open just for me? This got a little soggy, I don't know what it is.
It's computer equipment, fine. It says computer equipment, it's fine.
I'm gonna put it right there, it's a home delivery, so I don't need to do anything more than say like front door, is that okay? Thank you, do you wanna check?
It's a, it's a plastic, it's. It's a plastic book cover and it does have paper in it, but the paper should dry. Just damp or, you know, it took a good sawzle.
It'd be okay then.
It, was it just damp or did it take a good sawzling?
I took my hearing aids out. My truck's very loud and then I have to say what a lot.
Is it just a little damp or did it get a big sawzling of?
There you go.
No offense, but you guys have such dirty stuff coming out in your vehicles, it drives me nuts.
The door's open.
Well, actually, you're FedEx, UPS is worse. UPS is just, I won't touch their stuff.
I have a lot of respect for them.
Have a good night. Okay, so, we are. Hazard mitigation grant program.
I sent that to you guys and it doesn't, to me, it doesn't look like there's anything that.
No, I, I think we're out of that one.
I talked to the person at the regional commission and she said the kind of things that, that they're doing and we don't have any of those. We've recited our, upsized our culverts and, you know, we've taken mitigation steps always.
Yeah, we're not in a big flood anywhere that I don't know.
Okay, review fiscal year twenty four financial reports.
Those were handed out in your package tonight. Yeah, yours stapled for some reason. To your other packet design.
I'm important.
So I think it's over a little bit. The part of that is, well. If you look at the total highway, it's almost the tens of the, and the five thousand we've paid to D and K so far. Um, that's not gonna change. On the revenues, the revenues that go down because they have given us eighteen or thousand or something so far. Um, the biggest reason that it's over is we bought the culvert for. East road. But it hasn't been put in yet. So that culvert's gonna be in this fiscal year. We're gonna hire Allen the next fiscal year, so we'll get reimbursed in the next fiscal year.
Do we get reimbursed for it?
The, the general side is still down, but we still have a month to go. Highway, I know, I can tell you that Eric has bought another forty eight hundred dollars worth of gravel. Show up. As being over more in gravel, you didn't tell him you could spend more, so.
Ask him where he's getting his gravel, because that was actually one of my list of concerns. The stuff that's been going down on uh, North End and Northeast Road is. It is just, I, I've never seen anything like it, there's, if he's using something different or what it is.
It's big.
There's no wind in it, it's just, it's just.
I don't know where he's getting it. But, yeah, I can find out.
We're talking about it, we did go back and try to fix it.
I see you went back over it with.
And, yeah, the stuff is, the stuff that he put down is, is the problem.
It's big, it's large.
It's not compacting in, it's just there.
Yeah, I can ask him.
But the good news on the highway is that last year we didn't get reimbursed for. Pottery foot thing. Reimbursed this year, so that's an extra thirty six thousand, we weren't expecting some, and that's gonna cover. And we didn't get her, well, I shouldn't say that, I don't think we got a new gen aid, but maybe we did, I have to go check. Online the state, those things online now, so we have to go. We got the, we got all the stuff in and then Eric had to go upgrade. Go in and update the segments that he fixed. The grant people could look at the segments, segments and, yeah, this is what got spent on, this is. We did spend forty two thousand dollars to get twelve thousand dollars.
We're up in tickets.
We might be getting our segments done waiting for. Twenty thirty five when we're required to have them done, so. Just, I've talked to Eric about it, he said, well, once you get started, you gotta finish the project, you can't stop fixing it, but. That's what that is. Melody, did you bring your paperwork?
Um, I did not, I will bring it to you tomorrow, you gonna be here tomorrow?
I should be here in the morning.
Alright, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that is what it is, so we're good.
Yeah, I'll move that, we approved the warrants and orders.
I will second it. All in favor. Uh, estimate end of year fiscal year balance.
No, I was hoping to have it for you, but I was sick multiple last week. Brain was not functioning well enough to do numbers.
That's fine. Uh, old business, committee list, meeting schedule, duties, reporting to select board.
You guys are gonna look over those lists and.
Well, we should just make a schedule, I, I, I came up with something quick, you guys can yea or nay or, we can have lots of discussions, but. I thought the bi-monthly ones, I'm assuming that means they meet every other month, not twice a month. Um, once or twice a year? Get an update from them, monthly at least twice a year, as needed or quarterly once a year. And then my thought was, I would suggest that. Whomever the chair or, or whatnot, email either Gail and she gets it to us or they email us all. With an update prior to the select board meeting, so we. We have questions, then, you know, maybe it's closer to a twenty minute or less conversation, there's not much going on. So we can just, you know, kind of move it along. And then, what I would like to see is that they begin with their purpose as they understand it. Make sure that we're all on the same page. Um, how have they met their purpose in the last year, last quarter, year, Kathy or whatever, basically their wins? And what issues, if any, are they struggling with? That's what I was thinking, but I'm curious to see what you guys are coming up with.
Yeah, and I think, so if we figure out who needs to report. But, you know, once a year, twice a year, all that. And I think we need to then schedule it.
Yeah, if they meet as needed, I would, I would figure we could blow through a couple of those. In a night, but maybe I'm wrong, maybe it would take longer.
I think we could, I think we could.
If there's, what about twenty one, I think I counted on here, but I didn't know if every one of them. I mean, I, do we ever hear from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission representative?
Well, that's Bob Lloyd. You know, just, he's got, he's just a part of it. So he's not doing any in-person, but he does his own stuff.
And that's, that's something else we should.
But, i- and then again, do we need the, you know, the. The, the four that you had at the bottom, the ideal representative, I would think we might wanna hear from the emergency management director and then I'm doing the tax, so I can give you an update on that. If you want it, but then there's the Rutland Regional Planning Commission representative.
Right, they should report back once in a while. Regional planning commission just moved.
Uh, yeah, we're having virtual next week because they are still in the process of moving and. It might be a lively discussion, they're gonna talk about the road diet in Rutland.
I'm gonna show up for that, that's gonna be fun.
The road diet in Rutland for Woodstock Ave.
Don't you wanna see more bike lanes?
In the winter time, they're very known.
Cause it's, it's been so helpful in West Rutland.
They tried it five years ago on Woodstock Avenue and went back to.
And they wanna make, they, yeah, oh, it's, it'll, that will be a very interesting meeting.
It's, it is. Good luck with that.
Yeah, so on, on Thursdays, it's gonna be virtual, I'm wondering if they're gonna do the field trip to Fairhaven. For the July one, which I'm gonna be bummed if they do, because I might actually have to miss that one, but.
Alright, so now I think what we need is, huh, what ones are twice a year?
So I was thinking planning commission. Possibly the conservation commission, equity inclusion says that they meet once a month, I don't know if that's actually happening. And then uh, recreation is also listed as the second Monday, so I was assuming they were meeting once a month.
Recommission started meeting once a month.
They want money?
I told them they're gonna have to come talk to the select board, because there's not getting the budget for recreation, but I think it involves fixing the backboard. Up on the, the, the.
On an unrelated, you know, other than, but it does re- relate to month. Um, if the town wants to engage me in services for beaver removal, I'm no longer gonna be offering that for free. The town will have to pay accordingly. When that, that problem.
arises.
arises again.
Okay.
Well, that reminds me, Eric told me a month ago with the. Huge beaver down there that gets attention.
Yeah. It's just the, the, the way, the trajectory that there's going to be lots and lots of nuisance beaver problems, so.
Yep.
That's just.
It's, it's. Yeah, no, the guy, yeah, the guy at the ranch charges to do it, I mean, there's no, you should charge to do it.
Yeah, I was doing it for. It takes, it takes a lot of energy to to go out, trap them.
Yep.
Bring them back, dispose of them.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
So there's five or six, I believe, that meet monthly. If we were gonna do them twice a, a year, then we could almost do. Um, you know, every six months, we have one of them show up, no, no, I mean, not like January and then July and February and then August. And then for the once a year. Maybe we tack two one to some of those, maybe, maybe not. January through March or December through February, but.
And maybe just wanna have one meeting a year dedicated to all the committees coming in to report to you and then.
That would be different.
You don't, you don't have to have an agenda every month that somebody's coming.
Yeah, because we could have a special meeting and probably blow through a lot of the as needed ones.
Yeah, actually, that's not a bad idea. That's not, yeah, I kinda like that idea.
And then we could just leave the. The twice a year ones for the, the other. Regular ones, or even, I don't know if we wanted to do a special noodle twice a year for them as well, or.
Or you might, after you meet with them once or twice, you might say, alright, I guess they know what they're doing.
Right, then, yeah, yeah, that may change.
And so often, but just to get a handle on what is. Yeah, what they propose.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds good. So we'll do that, we'll do a special meeting for the.
The.
Ones that aren't important.
The porter. And when are we gonna do that, when people are slowed down a bit? What time of the year are you thinking?
Like now?
Yeah, I was gonna say, because I'm normally more awake this time here than I am in the winter, it's so dark out.
Yeah, well, July, the new fiscal year, you could start it with the new fiscal.
That's what I was thinking, yeah. Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
So if you wanna do it like mid-July.
Mm-hmm, well, our meeting, our next meeting is the eleventh.
Eleven.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, that's too soon to start it now.
Yeah, well. I mean, if you wanted to hit an easy one, you got two planning commission numbers.
Yeah.
I, I, yeah, I mean, we can. So. If we did it.
I mean, we could go right down the list and say Planning Commission is July, Conservation Commission, I don't know if we wanna do, oh, that's, um. If we wanna do them once or twice.
Conservation, Conservation Commission meets six times a year, so.
So maybe we bump them with the ones a year?
Yeah.
Um.
I think so.
Yeah, Recreation Committee is now once a month.
Well, I was thinking if we go down the list, Planning Commission could be July, Equity Inclusion could be August, Recreation could be September, unless they wanna. Bump up higher if they do want money.
Incentive.
They're not gonna get any, but they.
Was that a poor way of phrasing it?
Yeah, I mean.
They're, they're still pretty new, they're trying, still.
So maybe we should leave them a little, a little bit further down.
Yeah, let them kinda navigate out what they're doing.
So you've got the master list, there you can do, you can do.
Sure, so Planning Commission is July, Equity Inclusion will make August, Recreation will make September.
Yeah.
Which I may or may not make depending on the next grand job. And then, I mean, do you want me to do a special pre-presentation for TAC, or would you rather I just kind of spitball stuff that I've been learning, or?
I don't think we need a special.
I think if. If it comes up in the discussion, you know, Sherry would jump in with stuff.
Yeah.
That they had discussed, if it was something that we needed to know.
Mm-hmm.
Um. You don't have to rainfall a specific time, you know, something that we should be aware of, and I'd say just bring it up whenever you want to.
Or if Recreation Committee needs a little bit more time, do we wanna make them October and then have the um, special meeting for everybody else in September, or? Wanna try and have it earlier than that?
I don't want the special meeting in September.
Okay. August? July? August?
August.
Give them a little bit of time?
Yeah.
And like Greenup, I don't, I, I believe that's, they rarely have minutes. I'm assume, do they meet more than just right before Greenup Day, or?
No, um, and Greenup is Doug and Ed Hasnor and Nelson Jaquay. And Conservation Commission, it's sort of taken on the duties of three, so.
Okay.
They could probably just fold that in, I don't think you would actually need to.
And it, do we need to hear from the Board of Listeners or Board of Auditors?
The auditors you might wanna meet with, because the auditor set, the select board pad.
Okay.
And they haven't changed it in quite a long time. You know, you could ask the listeners to come in, I mean, we're gonna give you an informed. The reappraisal, grievance is next week, so.
Yeah, I mean, if nothing else, it'd be interesting just to, you know, and maybe that is something that the select board should consider. Every three years, it's just, even if. This turns out that we don't need to meet as often, it still might be good, just, you know, to hit it every three years, just so every select board member is aware.
Of what's going on.
Yeah, and who the people are. And how are they gonna be notified? We notifying them?
Select Board Assistance job, tell me who you wanna have here, we will do it.
Oh, Melody, you're on the Equity and Inclusion.
Yeah, I know. But as we go down.
Yeah. Right, well, I mean, then the, the Conservation Commission is, who's on that?
Conservation is Rainbow, Ed Hasnor, Ben Fontaine.
You can tell, you know, Rainbow when it is, that's not a. You know, we don't, you don't have.
Probably better to have a little email go out. And, and I would say, we're gonna send an email out to everybody.
Yeah.
At the same time, it said, this is something new, the select board is trying, we wanna meet with you. You know, this is, this is our preliminary schedule, so. Such a date, then we'll, we'll rearrange, over, rearrange another day, so you and I just need to get together, so we can. Figure that out and then.
Yep. Yeah, and I mean, I don't. Know if it needs to be the chair that shows up to present, or just, you know, somebody from the committee that. That, that shows up.
Well, and select board members are ex-official members of the Planning Commission.
And members of the planning.
And members of the planning commission.
We wouldn't have a quorum, though.
No.
Okay.
I think that'll entertain thoughts.
No, you can attend other. Committees meetings, as long as you don't talk about, you know, if you talk about their business, you can't talk about select board business without warning it. You can go to another, you know, you could go with E and I and just talk about E and I stuff, where you're the planning commission, you talk about planning commission stuff. It's just you can't talk about select board business unless you warn. Or whatever committee that you're on. Well, thank you for working on that. Yeah, sometime, some free time, let me know.
What are you doing on Saturday?
I'm here from nine to twelve.
Okay.
Okay. Um.
Or is a different day better?
No.
Okay.
Well, we're thinking about it, first in mind.
Right, Jones.
Okay. Speed limit ordinance update from Speed Committee.
I didn't put it in there.
Oh, okay.
Um, Fisher and I started working on it, and some of the little, we couldn't get the comments to disappear, and then when we looked at them, it was like, it was things in there that we were supposed to be putting in. I think.
Oh.
Thing was there, so the Speed Committee looked at it and said to the Select Board. Your chair, what did the speaker say?
Uh.
Adopted.
So, yeah, yes, so.
But I've gotta get you a clean top and I.
Once we have that, so if I do it next meeting. Um, we need to adopt that ordinance, so that we can get the ball rolling on getting it amended or adopted by the town.
Yeah, we had a couple of questions to ask. The league about the, the speed limit, and they did, but their. You know, their take on it was, let's get something adopted, so. It's better than.
Get it to ball rolling on that. Um.
Because once you adopt it, and there's ninety day appeal period, people can ask them, vote and all this.
But we're using the states.
We're using the league's model.
Yes, yes.
And what they advised was that we had taken two of their models and combined it into one, so they tried to make a better version of that one. For us to use.
Yep.
Right.
Because they had a separate one for stop signs and a separate one for speed, and, you know, we kind of combined it all.
Yeah, I remember that, it was like, yeah.
And they had a recommendation about putting a yield sign over here, but. When I'm driving in and out with the kids.
Yeah.
Nobody's gonna see that yield sign there.
They're not. They're not, I think it's.
Pretty much, everybody knows when to slow down, and you know, going up and coming down and come down around from the school.
Yeah.
You have to stop there, because sometimes it's people coming up and.
Yeah, I mean, I think that area is pretty self-explanatory.
Is this?
What to do.
Like, the fifty mile an hour on one forty here, is that set in stone, or?
It, for now, it is. We're hoping that the steps we're gonna take slow people down. Um. It, it with enforcement and some signage.
Mm-hmm.
Lights, which I'll talk about in a second. Um, is hopefully gonna slow people down. I'm not saying that we're not gonna attempt to change it, we're gonna revisit it down the road, see how the steps that we're gonna take. Work out. And if speeders are gonna speed.
Yeah, I was just wondering about that, those semis that were coming through, you know, if they saw fifty mile an hour road. Did they get sent on that route, you know, that's my.
I don't know.
Yeah.
What their GPS is taking.
Yeah.
Uh, typically GPS takes you on the quickest route. Fifty mile an hours gonna be the quickest route.
Right.
So. Right, right. Um, so, one thing that we would really like to do. Um, is, well, there's a few things, so we want to put amber. Light, amber solar lights on the top of each twenty-five. To make them kinda stand out a little bit more. We'd also like to put a red. Solar light on stop sign. Um.
On what?
The stop sign, yeah. Um, there is something else that we would like to do. We'd like to look into either doing speed feedback signs like they have in Wallingford, or. A speedback cart, but that is. I think what I'd like to do with that is because it is a big purchase. Um, I would like to put that out to. Um, the, the town. Cause so, the speed feedback. The town meeting, and let them decide if that is something that the town wants to do. The lights I would like to do, they're not horribly expensive, so. Thought that's something I would like to do. But the signage.
Almost in grand.
Yes.
Yeah, so what, my question is, can you get, cause I was not sure, looking through it, can you get one of those carts? That says, okay, this is your speed, but can you also, if you have an emergency and you have to close a road, can you, they also do that? Say road closed. One, like, there was one option that did that, because I figured if we had to buy one. That would be the way I'd go.
So, Sherry looked up the stuff, um, a cart. Outfitted with everything we need for it, trailer, and I don't know if it does road clothes. Aspect, it was ninety-three hundred.
Well.
Sherry, do you know if it did the road closed aspect of it, or? I don't think so.
I don't think so, but I'm sure for additional money, they could, they could.
Right, yeah. Um. With this, the three s- feedback signs were twelve, seven. It's a large purchase, and I don't really wanna. I, I hate to, I'd like to put it out to the voters, uh, to, so they can make that decision.
And what's the life expectancy, do we know? Cause for the life, they said that those were supposed to be for five years.
Yeah, um, it's in that paperwork.
Alright, I, I didn't read that part, I apologize.
Is there a place where I could drive at night and see the lights on the stop signs and whatnot?
You mean the amber ones, Brandon has them.
Any place closer, like in the middle of Brandon, like.
Yes, going through Brandon Center.
With all of the other lights.
Yes, they have them.
Cause I, at night, I generally have an aversion to, you know. Red flashing lights or this or that, I mean, it suddenly it becomes a little bit of, it's, I'm, I'm sensitive to light pollution, so. And that, to me, you know, just off, off the cuff, it sounds like, you know, that could be a lot of. You know, if you start putting lights up on this and that, and this and that, and you get a lot of. Light pollution.
Well, I was thinking about the stop sign, I mean, but it's facing the, would the lights be bothering the neighbor, you know, there, or the, the, more this way? Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, you know, yeah.
If it's a stop sign in the middle of the night and no one's there, does it really matter if you stop? There, I'm just like, the practicality of, you know, putting, and, you know, I was thinking about this, and I was also thinking, it was like. That just becomes an absolute, like.
I.
I think it's a good idea, it's just, I'm kinda considering, yeah, maybe we should ask the neighbors first if they wanna.
That, too, I'm wondering if you, I didn't look at it, and I, I, I'm wondering if you can shut them off at night. Or if you can lead, just have them on during the day.
Why, why wouldn't you, I mean, if we're, why would you have them on during the day?
It's but the. The twenty-five are the ones I'm, I would like one for the stop sign, but the twenty-five amber lights, I really. Want them for that.
So do you need build on when school is in session, or do you want them, you're down? At one point, the, the local State D Trans guy said, he likes school zones. Speed limits in schools and, but when it's not in session, why do you need people driving?
Cause you'll just get, we'll just get none of it.
Yeah, cause this was, it's, it's anywhere that needs a twenty-four seven warning, so. I don't know if you can, I don't know. Over a certain timeline.
I, you know, I was just thinking, they're like, they become targets for rowdy teenagers with baseball bats.
Can I talk?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, I think one of the things I've noticed for myself is people get preoccupied with something else. That flashing light will get their attention, it's gonna keep honest people honest, and if we're worried about va- kids misbehaving. That's no reason to not have the lights. If you look at that survey that you had the, um, Regional Planning Commission done. One of the things people are really concerned about is safety on the roads. They're concerned during the day, walking, going through town center, we just need to get people to slow down, and to get them to slow down. You need their attention, cause they're busy, worried about the next thing they're going to do.
Yeah, I mean, I like the idea, I just wanna, uh, make sure that.
We can check with A Lane. Um.
I'm just thinking, you know, if you put twelve grand into something and then.
No, no, they're not, they're hundreds, they're not.
The flashing red light was only.
Hundred.
Hundred twenty-six per light, per year.
Then I need one of those, three amber. It's not expensive, and I, I think it's. Personal, I would like to do, I think it's worth a shot doing it. If A Lane's okay with.
Right, well, what about, or is the bush blocking it? Is there, what, you put one on the sign right out here?
The twenty-five?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well.
All three twenty-fives, that one, I don't know.
Mm-hmm. So I guess we should ask all the neighbors around, how they feel, what they feel about it.
Okay.
I don't know about these guys, I don't think they're gonna.
I know she would.
I, I, uh, once, I think.
I know Rachel will be fine with it, she said she would, because it just got brought up the conversation. Cause of her walking and her son and stuff. But I will check. But I will check with Aileen. I will reiterate that with her, just to make sure.
Okay.
Like, I'm, I'm fine with mine. Yeah, it's kind of closer to her than me.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'll check with her. Okay. Right, and then I guess next meeting makes a decision on, yeah.
Okay, we got a lot of meetings, a lot of decisions to make for the next meeting.
Well, they're quick decisions. I hope.
There's a document to officially seal the twenty twenty-three grand list. There's no suits or appeals pending, and once we seal it, then. Nobody can come back and write us about it, so. It's a standard thing that towns do every year. Can't do it until after February. In the following year or so.
So we all sign it?
Y'all have to sign it, yep. Mister sign it here, the select board's on it.
Okay. Uh.
Next thing is the, there is a penalty for people to late file their home states. And since the very beginning, the select board has always raised that kind of thing. Some people just forget, some people's accountants don't do it right, um. It's.
And if we waive it.
Yep, me too. I second that. All in favor?
I.
Uh, let's be care, we just went over that. Uh, composting transfer station recommendations for solid waste recycling.
The solid waste and recycling committee met last week. Wheaton has decided he's no longer gonna be our compost guy. We did find somebody that does. Little towns, he lives in Rochester and does a, a bunch of them. And he is willing to do it. Or he's got a forty-five gallon tub that he brings. And he's gonna bring his sawdust, so after each shift, it's supposed to get covered up with sawdust, which should help cut down on some flies and maggots. Gets, gets a little gross down there sometimes.
Little.
When Wheaton can't make it. But anyway, so this guy is willing to do it for fifty bucks a month and. The solid waste recycling committee recommended that you guys hire him. Cause we have to, we have to collect containers. There's not a lot of compost put in there, but maybe more will be if the container is a little more.
Bigger.
Yeah.
And where's the sawdust? How's that provided?
He's gonna bring it in the tub.
Oh, okay.
What's he do with bears?
You know, I didn't talk to him about that. It's kind of a sketchy cellphone reception when I was in Rochester or something. He's gonna come every other Wednesday. That's when he does middle time. So he'll pick up the old ones and.
So the compost is gonna sit for.
A week.
Every.
But it's in a closed container. For the week.
See how it goes. And sometimes that doesn't get picked up for anyone, so. So I'd like, I'd like the board to thank Wheaton for doing it all these years at no charge.
Yes, that's awesome. Thank you much. Um.
So this guy's name is, I forget, his, his name is Zachary Kavakis, but he does have a, a business name for his. Compost and.
So we, we need to make a motion to do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll talk about this.
So I'll make them, we, I'll make a motion to go with this guy for.
Zachary.
Is it fifty dollars a month?
Yeah.
Fifty dollars a month.
Um, let's see how it goes. See what works out. Hopefully his container is bear proof.
Well, second.
It's a pretty big, just clumsy kind of forty-five gallon container. I'm not sure any container is truly bear.
I know, he may have a mess on his hands a couple times. I'm sure he's dealt with it before.
Well, Rochester, I would think so.
Yes. Yep. Yep. Um.
So did you get my second and we, I'll figure, we all. Hi.
Bye.
Hi.
Uh, members concerns? I've none. Miscellaneous correspondence.
With one more thing, but that's it on.
Oh, okay.
Well, county sheriff's contract.
No. I assume we're still ten hours.
I didn't read it a whole lot. The rate's gone up to fifty dollars, but it's not gonna exceed the twenty-four thousand something like that.
So no. It's not ten hours.
Right, I mean, it says, it's, it's out for ten hours, but it's not.
Right.
Yeah.
And then if you look at the, the report, the last year. Um, for eleven months, we just spent fourteen thousand dollars and the budget of twenty-four. And so this one month might be another thousand dollars that's gonna get spent, so.
He was around yesterday.
Yeah, he was in town yesterday. You guys wanna, I'll sign it and then. You guys can read it and. You want me to date it?
Yes. Somebody move that. Somebody move to.
Oh, I, I moved we.
Same.
Yeah.
It's doesn't change.
County sheriff's contract. Second.
All in favor?
Hi. Are we all signed yet?
Yes.
If there's room, sure. There is room. There's lots of lines here.
Um. Okay, members concerns. Oh, miscellaneous correspondence mail.
What was that other thing that came in the email? Something else.
Is there something at the end?
Off the old one.
Was your correspondent at the very end municipal planning for assistance.
Yeah, oh, and we.
We have to get, uh, we talked until, at the very beginning of this, they came and did an energy study of the. Now, what was an old town garage? And we finally got the results of the energy thing and a proposal on how to put in heat pumps and solar arrays and. You can tell that it's really boilerplate because they say use um low flow. Attachments to all the water faucets. Well, the town garage doesn't have any. We have one sink in here, so, you know. Forgot to delete the part that didn't fly. Well, one also like the thirty-seven thousand and one is from for forty-seven or sixty.
No.
You'll have, you have to look them over, but.
Okay.
I put that on July meeting.
Um. Uh, executive session?
I don't believe so.
No, I think we're good.
I have to remember to put on, oh, no, actually, we should be doing it tonight.
Was that?
Is the annual salary, what, what you're gonna do for salaries, starting at the first. I forgot all about it. And then I just realized that getting into fiscal years.
Maybe we need a special meeting for that. I don't know if we're ready.
Well, the board put in a three percent raise, but then we're gonna look at it again before the stuff got into system. But I will just keep paying at the same rate until you decide what the salary schedules are gonna be and then we have to.
And then.
Back, back to somebody who will back for them.
Good.
I started.
I, I was. Yeah, I was gonna actually.
The auditors had to see that it's actually, you know, the select board had decided and this is what the rates of pay are going to be for. Road crew and for the transfer station guys and that stuff.
And office, oh.
Yeah.
And the three percent raise, is that gonna?
Thirty percent is what's in the budget right now.
And didn't we do five one year?
We did one year. In some years we've done none. We wanted, sorry, not beg. Eric wanted five percent. Actually wanted seven percent last year, but talked the board into doing three percent. If you wanted to adjust something, you could.
Um.
If that's what's in the budget to save or something. Well, I'll send that out so you have a chance to gather.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Isn't standard five?
No. It varies from year to year.
Some people don't get a raise every year.
No, no, I know.
A lot of people don't get a, a cost of living rate every year.
No, I know, so. I never get.
Three, three could be considered generous by a lot of.
My boss is a jerk.
Yeah.
Your boss is what?
And Karen probably take me to the loony bin.
Well, Sherry, why don't you work on the ceiling fan?
During the thunder.
In an electrical storm. Not put that on the tape.
Okay, uh, all right, me adjourned.
Next one, July eleventh.
Yep.
Yes. To work with, I was on top. Thanks for doing that.
Yeah, thank you very much for doing that.